Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Orange Board of Finance. Today's Monday, November 18th. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. And we'll start by having everyone introduce themselves, beginning on my right.
Anna Mann.
Kevin McNabola.
John Cifarelli, Finance Director.
Chad Lombardi.
Joe Nozo.
Jim Leahy.
Ajit Jain.
Kevin Houlihan, thank you very much. Item three is public dialogue. There's no one here from the public, so... Item number four, what I'd like is someone to make a motion to move item number seven, Presentation from Tom Hurley, Tax Collector. From number seven to number four.
So moves.
Second.
Motion by Kevin, second by Anna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose of staying unanimous? Thank you. Okay, new item four, Presentation from Tom Hurley, Tax Collector. Welcome.
Hi. Get to see you guys once in a while and show up here. Last meeting, there was some discussion about motor vehicles and 100% should have been collected, et cetera. So, I wanted to bring what we are doing in our office on motor vehicles. The first thing I want to say is we have a 99.6 collection rate, which is in the top 10 towns of the state. And we've been maintaining that for years. Motor vehicles, however, have been our bane of existence, if you will. We've got a lot of accounts, and we've had more accounts with individuals like Amazon Logistics, with hundreds of vehicles sitting here to keep track of. And when some of these companies don't pay right away, we have to go collect it. So, tonight, I want to just show you a couple of the things here. And I don't want to spend a lot of time, but if you have questions, go ahead. These are big issues right now, lack of correct mailing addresses. We don't mail a bill to the right person, and maybe they're out of state or someplace else, they're not walking into the office to find out what their bill is. Okay? As a matter of fact, most people, if I, you know, out of sight, out of mind. So if we can't get the bill to them, we got an issue. If there's problems, or we want to try and call them, we do not have the phone numbers in the current system. Everybody seems to think we've got email addresses and phone numbers. We don't. So, we're gonna have to deal with that, and I will tell you what we're doing about that to fix these problems. Lack of death verification. There's nothing worse than for two or three years running, sending a bill only to find out, yeah, he died four years ago. Well, the vehicle's gone, there was no estate, and as a matter of fact, one of you, I think, questioned why do we have in the... When we write these things off, we've got a code in there, you know, deceased, no estate, and what that meant. Well, that is what it means. There's nothing to go after, and there's no asset around for us to collect if we wanted to. And lack of additional verification for parameters other than the date of birth, which will be necessary if I have to go to court to collect out-of-state bills, which is something I'm looking at now. Because once they leave the state, there's some people that just ignore the fact they left a bill behind. And there's no way to get their attention. So, the only way to do that, according to our statutes, is I have to go to court, get a court ruling, and then I can use that, because that would be recognized by the other states. So, I'm looking at doing that, hoping I don't have to, but I don't know. Anyway, just some things coming up. All right, we get our addresses from the DMV. So our addresses are only as good as the DMV record, and if nobody updates the DMV record, we send things to the wrong place. I've got the mail to prove it. New three-year renewals mean the address could be over three years out of date from the time the car was registered, the address they're keeping, and where they live today. Post office forwarding expires in six months, and we are typically out of phase with the post office by at least three months. So mail gets returned as undeliverable. We do have address correction, it costs us money, but also, sometimes, they don't give us where they went, because the post office doesn't know either, because if they didn't talk to us, they didn't talk to the post office, or leave a forwarding address. And we still have to re-mail the bills again. Snowbirds. January, they're not here. The bills go out in December, and if the bill doesn't hit them, it sits there until they get back in March. It's a problem. We've been trying to get these things out in December now. They used to wait till one January to get them out, so they have people have an extra couple of weeks where they still might be here. So I mean, we've been trying to do things, but snowbirds means there's a second address QDS-5, our current tax system does not currently support phone numbers. I have a request in and an idea in that they are looking at to add a capability to the system to do it. It's not that they don't have data places for it, but since QDS-5 right now is a bill system, it tracks by bills, not by people. So, new bill comes in, there's nothing to tie to pull that other information from that individual that you might have had on a prior record in, even if you put it there. So I'm working with QDS, don't know, they haven't come back to me with a fix yet. I gave them what I thought was a pretty good idea. I don't know. Our ability to respond to tax bill problems in a timely manner is limited to the postal service right now. That can take up to 12 days, up to six days out and six days back, depending on the time of year, and when they're taking vacations, and how fast the processing center is, because all our mail goes to Hartford. Now this causes another problem. People drop things in their mailbox and think they're meeting our USPS stamp thing. Well, if they do it on the last day, like January 31st, for February 1st delivery, it takes two days to get to Hartford to get a postal stamp. So if they just dropped it in the mailbox and they didn't go to the window to get a stamp, they're late. And then I have to deal with that. We deal with it. Locating taxpayers when they make mistakes, don't sign checks, don't put a date on the check, write the check for the wrong amount, and it doesn't match the number. Right now, that's a 12-day. So if somebody does it, we have no way of quickly getting ahold of them and asking them to come in and fix it. So it ends up waiting to the end of the tax season, and by then, they pick up two months' worth of interest, because we just can't get to it. And taxpayers call us. I had one today. She said, "My name is blah, blah, blah," and... She was on a cellphone, and the cellphone all broke up when she gave me the number. I don't think I even got one number out of the numbers she put down. And she's expecting me to call her back. Well, that's bad enough, but if I had a name, which she didn't leave the full name either, I might be able to do something about it. There are no general phone directories available for free anymore. The internet services typically charge for these services if we were to use it, and then you're still not sure who they are. So we need a system that's gonna fix that, and I'm gonna show you what we picked tonight. People have said, "Well, why don't you just check the voter rolls?" Well, that's nice, but as much as we might like to think that our voting system is wonderful, people do not tend to update their phones in the voting system when it's been there a while. So they get rid of their home landline, that's what they used to register to vote with, it's a no-good phone number anymore. And I think if anybody's ever run a political campaign, they have figured this out. You need something else. Lack of death verification. We try and use newspapers for the local and internet checks. Our problem is, is those are spotty. And Anna does a great job of picking them up and trying to get to us, but if they don't make the newspaper, we don't get them. This is a problem. It results in sending mailings to the wrong party, as it should be going to a fiduciary handling the estate, and therefore, we get returned mail by the post office, because we send it to the name of the party, at their address. Post office knows they're deceased, they just, well, sometimes put deceased on it, or other times, just return it to us. And that doesn't help us collect either. Court records are only useful for those parties that are in the state and actually have a probate court settle their estate. If all you got left is the car, most of the time, that doesn't happen, because the car isn't worth the filing fees, and the car disappears. Personal identifiable information can be crucial for determining tax liabilities of individuals. Before we go to a court proceeding, we want to make darn sure that the person involved that we're taking to court is the one that owes the liability. And people with the same name, we've even had some with that same name and the same birthdate, so date of birth doesn't even always do it for you. And that only works for motor vehicles, because for real estate and personal property, we don't have birthdates available. The only reason we have the date of birth available for motor vehicles is the DMV sends it to us. Social Security number identification is not available for this purpose, and out-of-state driver's licenses are also not available to try and track and verify. All right, let's take a quick look at the size of the problem here. Any collection rate lower than 99.25% means a possible revenue shortfall that has to be made up by other revenue streams or cuts. That number is determined by you folks. This is what I get. And that's where our numbers have to come in. If we don't raise that amount, you didn't meet the budget, and you're short, and you're gonna have to cut something. Or find other funds to fund it. Okay? Right now, we currently have higher collection rates on real estate and personal property than 99.25%, and that's how we get up to the 99.6, but it's masked the offset of the motor vehicle shortfalls. And I'll show you those numbers coming up. Since collection is significantly harder for motor vehicle taxes, a considerable amount of office time is taken up dealing with motor vehicle tax bill collection. We have implemented, in the last year, added a state marshal to our collection, as well as our town constables. Motor vehicle taxes are not their favorite things to collect, but we have engaged them. However, that means more work for my office, because... Excuse me. Anna, every time she calls, I'm not available. Okay. The office must issue an alias tax warrant. This is more paper that authorizes the constables and state marshal to act under my authority to collect the taxes. All right, this is a Jim chart. Roughly 9% to 10% of the town revenue is motor vehicle taxes. Okay? And you'll see right now, it only says 7.98%, but I also don't have any of the MVS supplementals done yet. They won't, we won't know those for about another month or so. And that'll pick that number up.
Is this what you handed out?
Pardon?
Is this the same as what you handed out?
Yes. The second sheet here is the, there's our goal, 99.25%. So let's look at what motor vehicles have been in 2020, 2021, 2022. 98.6, or almost 7. 98.6, 98.4. Right now, that is around, was 88.82 in September. Because we've implemented this new Accurate system that I'm gonna tell you about, we are... Turn you off. So as you can see, the magnitude of the problem for especially the supplementals has just been going up. I mean, 96.2, 95.6, 94.7. So our collection rate has just been dropping on supplementals. And like I said, that may be if people are going to Florida more and whatever, but we're having trouble collecting that. And it's over $808,000. Okay? I don't know what this year will be. Mill rate's down, so the number will be a little lower. And matter of fact, when the mill rate's a little lower, our number drops there. So, but that's our problem, okay? I can't get to 99.25% here. So, right now, our wonderful 99.6% collection rate is masking a 10% of the budget that I can't get to your goal. So what am I gonna do about it? Yes, I can complain, but I don't think that's gonna work. Department of Motor Vehicle Civils, we have a $250 annual fee that we have to pay, that's to try and keep track of the motor vehicles. We do have a new $20 release fee that we put into effect this last July. The selectmen did that. We also use the online business search with the Secretary of State. We use probate court records. We use the internet search engines, that's iffy. We use True People Search. We use voter registration records, and we use the IQS Town Clerk and Land Record System. And the new system that we just got as of the 1st of August is the Accurate system I'm going to show you tonight. Okay? As you can see up at the top, Accurate is a direct connection to public records to help verify identities, conduct investigations, and detect fraud. So this is not a low-budget system by any means. And we'll go through a quick sign-in when we get there. Now, Accurate is a product of Lexus Nexus. It's per-seat priced, it's $15.60 per year. And this year, I only had $600 in the budget, so I had to take money from other parts of my budget to get this. Testing began the 1st of August with one seat. It helps solve the address problem, the telephone number problem, the death notice problem, out-of-state driver's license issues, and the snowbird problem. So this is a product that the problems I showed you are going to help me and my office address. And it also helps with the alias tax warrants, because now we can provide better contact information, which is one of the things they have complained about, because they have trouble finding them. You know, just handing them off without giving them something to go by, they're not at the address, they're not gonna collect it either.
So Tom, the per-seat is per-individual?
Yes.
How many do you need? Just one?
I need two. I wasn't gonna go with two right up front, we're testing it. Okay, I wanna make sure that it met what it does, and so far, it has. Can you quickly just give one of those to each of the board members? I need these back, this is office work. This is the product that we've been doing right now with the motor vehicle delinquencies. So you're gonna see, we've been trying to, especially with the number of addresses in here, and this is just a few of the letters. I mean, we did this for each letter. I've got, I think, C still to go. We got two more that were P and Q and R were done today. So I think that we've got one left to get out there. So getting the bills out there to the right people is a problem. And contacting the people to make sure that the address is right. Okay? Because, just because I got a wonderful system that gives me another address for them, doesn't mean that that's where they want the mail sent to. So we're currently paid through July 2025, and I will be recommending a second seat for the next budget cycle. We have now implemented a revised $5 rebilling fee on the delinquent accounts. This was approved in July by the BOS. It helps recover our mailing costs and the tool cost. So this is not costing the town any money, because the people that are delinquent are paying for it. Okay? We have over 1,600 delinquent accounts, and I'm on the low side there, folks. Plus, I got a second billing cycle for the ones who ignore me the first time and the second time. So they ignore me for the final billing, that's another time that goes through. So there's more numbers there, each one of those, because I have to rebuild because of interest, which we have 1.5% interest per month, so I have to put new numbers out, because they owe different amounts of money. So, the final demand notice also will be assessed a $5 fee. Okay? So, and what we're trying to do is cover that, the $250 DMV fee, and without getting the taxpayers that are just on time paying whatever, they shouldn't be the ones being penalized. Okay? They're not the ones causing the problem why I need the tool. If everybody came and showed up and paid in the time cycle, my job would be simple. They don't. I think is the best way to put that. Okay, here's the sign-in screen. You've seen that with the screenshot. Sign-in is a bit complicated.
We are not seeing it.
I'm not sharing the screen.
It showed earlier, that's why I'm a little surprised by it's not showing.
I think this is the last slide you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I might have to drop that for just a minute, so let's get out of that. Out of that. Out of that. All right, we'll bring that back up. There you go. Okay, that's what I wanted to do right there. Enter. And again, you've seen that in the initial screen. Now, you're gonna notice something about this sign-in. They are very, very sensitive, and I have to be careful of what I show you in this system, so I don't violate the rules. So we're gonna be looking at dead people, but... Now, these are the regulations that we have to follow because of PII, Personally Identifiable Information. And you'll notice that there's other provisions for other states. Connecticut's not a particular problem down there for us. But if you were in other states, you would also have to meet their rules. So the first thing is... Okay, and then... Other people use these for other things. We don't use it for any of those. This is the Graham Leach-Pilile, I think it is. Yeah, okay. We have to make legal compliance with that. And we have to say that this is a legitimate business purpose due to government rule, regulation, or fiduciary duty, which is what it is. And then I have to confirm I'm meeting all those other ones, since they don't really apply, we'll just go there. Okay, here it is. Here's the advanced persons search. I'm going to put in a deceased party, because I can explain what needs to happen, and I can't violate the privacy of somebody who's dead, so that's not an issue. Okay, so, put in the last name, you put in the first name. Now, I have an address for her, but she's dead, so that probably wouldn't be any good anyway. Whoops. How about we use the right letter? Okay. So instead of having to put in the whole address, I'm just gonna say, okay, check around Orange, Connecticut, because that's where I think this person is still around. Now I can go Connecticut General, or I could leave it open and do a whole search over the entire US. That tends to be a little more lengthy list of names. And there we are. Now, see that big D over here? That tells me she's deceased. And it also gives me her date of death, and that helps me decide whether I should be pursuing this any further or not. In this case, she died in 2022, so we tried to collect 2022, and we still billed her in 2023, because she, nobody, including their fiduciary, took her off of the DMV records, so we got to do it all over again. Now, her billing address, believe it or not, in our system, is there. That's not even in town. So the nice thing about this is, if the address that they put up there for the person is out of town, I can check these addresses to see what was the Orange address. So that helps me administratively make sure I've got the right person, and I'm not mailing stuff to strangers that it shouldn't be going to in the first place. The other thing I will have you note is that we have phone numbers over here. Now, they may not be good, because they're pulling them from public sources. And of course, a dead person is probably not gonna have their cellphone with them. I'm not sure the battery would live that long anyway, past them. But you've got the other people who might be fiduciaries. I believe Brandon might be her son. Her husband, I believe, had passed away long before that. But anyway, it gives us phone numbers, social security numbers if we need them, I'm not gonna unlock that, and driver's license and the state. From all of that, I can identify and make sure I'm dealing with the right person for collecting the tax. And it doesn't matter what state they're in. Remember, I said I had that state problem? I don't have a state problem anymore with this product. Now that doesn't mean that everything's right, and I am gonna find them, which is why we have the phone numbers, and we try and have my office call the phone numbers. And those sheets I just passed around, those are the sheets that we have used, and you can see, we've got addresses on them, we've got phone numbers on them, or whatever, and that's what my office has been doing for the last month and a half. Because this, you know, you can't just get through 1,600-plus records that fast. We've also been able to use it for businesses. I can show you another one of these that's not there, but I don't think it's gonna give you anything, so I'm gonna speed this up a little bit, because I promised it gets you out of here quickly. So that was people. Here's businesses. And I'm just gonna put my business in here.
It's already there.
Yes, sir.
Just click on it.
Oh, okay. There it is, yep, all right. Now, I don't want the name of that person in there, so we're gonna delete that. That might mess the search up, but it turns out that it doesn't as much. So, let me see here, guys. Just wipe that out. Okay, and then we're going to do a search. And hey, that's the address of the business, that's the phone number of the business. I don't have to go to the internet to figure out what it is. I can go right here, and it will tell me, these are the registered things, and they use the state records as well. So if I can't find it on the state records myself, there's a good chance I'm gonna get a good number here. Not perfect, because some of these guys are not in business anymore, in which case, I still have to go tracing down principles to see if I can collect the bill. So this is Accurate. This is the system that, yes, it costs a little bit more, but it improves the efficiency of the office tremendously to try and get ahold of people when you've got problems. And in motor vehicles, we have problems. That's true across the board in almost every city. I don't think you'll have one, unless they've shipped all the billing off to somebody else that will tell you differently. And I'm open for any questions that you may have, but I just wanted to let you know what our issues are in motor vehicles, because you seemed to have interest in it last week.
I have one question, Tom.
Sure.
How much more you will be able to collect using this software?
Well, if you looked at the numbers on Jim's chart that we had up there, just in one month, I've been able to push up probably at least 2% or 2.5% to 3% of that motor vehicle bill in one month. I went from 88-something to 93-something, and some of it, I know, was our Amazon Logistics, but they haven't paid everything up yet, so we're still balancing.
So you picked up $5,000 in a month?
Pardon?
You picked up $5,000?
Oh, easily, easily, easily.
And the annual cost is $1,500, so, yeah.
Well, like I said, though, we also collect the $5 fee, so you're not paying for this.
Right, I get that.
Okay? It's just the way we do our accounting, you know, the offsets in the budget that you see versus the other income coming in don't always offset it. So I wanted to make sure you guys understood, I have been looking for solutions that, like our front end. Our front end, for all the taxes, people are, for the most part, loving it. The new one that's just come in, they can use credit cards, they can pay at the window. People really love the ACH feature on there, for it's only a buck and a half, they don't have to leave, they don't have to get an envelope or stamp and hope it makes it in the mail, and they get their confirmation right then and there. So, we have been trying to do things to provide the most service we can with the people we have. And I have to address these motor vehicle issues, because if I don't address those, then those numbers are just gonna keep going south on me. And especially the supplementals, as you saw, they were dropping about a percent a year. I can't afford that. 94% is not a good collection rate. By the way, the 98% for motor vehicles? By the way, the ninety-eight percent for motor vehicles, most of the tax collectors in the state would give their ITs to have that collection rate.
Oh, sure, oh, yeah.
So, it's not that we're trying to do a bad job, it's just I can't do the job that you're expecting me to do. Uh, so I'm having to do the things that should be, have been done in this office, probably long ago, but, uh, to get better results for you folks. I'm just hearing people complaining about budgets not having numbers to do things earlier in this meeting. Sorry, I eavesdropped a little bit there. I don't know what it was, I don't care, but I'm just saying, uh, if I can bring it in, you guys can spend it. And that's my goal, okay, that's my job.
One thing I gotta say, though, about the collection on the autos. When we refund money to taxpayers, it goes as a credit or a debit, whichever you wanna say, against that account. So his collection rate is actually higher than what it's showing because of the offsets for refunds on, on motor vehicles, and we, some years, we get a lot of them. There was one year, I'm not sure Tom was here, where there was motor vehicle mistakes coming out of motor vehicle on tax towns for some of the cars, and the people have to, we send them a bill, they have to pay, and then we refund them the money, and there's a whole, long process to do that. Also, on lease cars, where the people turn in their cars on leases, money goes back a lot of times. So there, there is some offsets to his collection rate.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we kinda have a joke in the office, because Michelle handles the refunds, and I have Fran out there, out there collecting, and there's days and weeks where she's giving more money out in refunds than we're bringing in at the window.
If you listen to the Board of Selectmen, just about every month, there's a vote on the refunds, and ninety-nine percent of them are motor vehicles. Last month, there was about fourteen thousand, but we've had months where it's been fifty and seventy-five thousand.
What causes that, Joe?
Uh, lease cars, where the lease cars go in. Uh, people sell their, sell their cars, and they don't turn in the plates, or they don't use the plates on the new car, so the, the bills keep going out on those old plates until the registration dies on them. Number, number of different reasons.
It sounds like more than enough.
Totaled cars.
Basically...
We've got bigger fish to fry than, you know, we know details.
Everybody should understand, if you have done anything with your motor vehicle, buy, sell, trade, junk, scrap, or whatever, you need to be in the assessor's office with the documentation telling them you did it. And that would alleviate some of the problem.
Right.
But as, uh, was just pointed out, we collect the tax that, that's sitting there. And then we rebate it after the fact.
Roger that, here's the idea. The next time you send out car bills, have a little bit of a card, and rather than saying, "Don't forget, OVNA, uh, is in your area code for you to use", have some sort of very quick and catchy, whatever you just said. So that's a reminder that whatever that is, I don't need to hear it again.
I just want to make a quick comment on that, because in this last go-round, we had a change for the front end for the website. We had a big thing, please read, we had full instructions of how to use it. People took the billow, threw that stuff away, and then used the wrong website. And, and I mean, it's, it was significant, it wasn't, it wasn't...
Oh, yeah, no, there was people complaining on social media, so I was like, really? Yeah.
Yeah, well, if they had read, they wouldn't have had any questions at all, because it was all laid out for them, step by step.
For this, since our fifteen turned to thirty-five?
I'm sorry.
Do you need us to do anything, or is this just all information?
This is information for you, because you were questioning why we're not at a hundred percent on motor vehicles. Well, now you know.
And we're gonna, it's gonna improve with this new software?
We're trying, we're, we're hoping they'd stop the slide and get an increase, yes.
I appreciate it, and that's a good presentation and a good effort.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let me give this back to Jim. Uh, I need the, uh, yeah, the working papers back, because we're still using those.
While we're doing this with Jim's computer, I would, we did item seven, I would like to change item number six, which is the funding request, to item number five. Most by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Anna.
Sure, whatever it is, remind us, remind us where we are and all that, it'll be helpful.
Kevin. We're moving, uh, funding request, item six, to item five now.
So we're gonna do that next.
So, yeah, since Mr. Britton's here, we don't want him to have to sit here for another half hour, forty-five minutes.
Excellent, I was gonna recommend that to you.
Alright, good, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
We're gonna use that chair for Bob.
Yep, I'm trying to get out of the way here.
Gotta unplug this thing, though.
Yep.
I'm sure you're returning that phone call, too.
Yeah, it's, it's my only amp, it's still, like, I've been trying to get a hold of her for a while, and then she calls in for a local meeting.
Alright. So we're moving it up, which one, we're gonna start with, which, uh, uh, the, um...
A, allocate funds from ARPA account.
Oh, I was thinking of the thing to put up on the screen, did we put up the memo, or where is it? The Siffarelli memo, or no? The and any memo, or do we need that one?
Yep, that's, that's what we're talking about.
The order of events, I'm just, we have this one, Anna, and we also have this one. I, I just wanted, you know, whatever flow we wanted to use, Kevin, to look at it, or the folks at home to look at.
Welcome, sir.
So, order of events from a process perspective, John, you, you sent out the materials to us, which, I've got three of these, right? I've got the one from Ann, and then I got two from...
I would, I would go by the ones that Bob sent. Ann's, it's just our notification to me.
Okay, so that means we would be starting with the more, the bigger one, which I think is this one, Bob. So, while we have this up here, so people at home can see it, why don't you just talk to us and tell us what we got?
Sure, I, I think you recall, I think it was in twenty-twenty-one, there were the two big rainstorms, and we had three neighborhoods come into the selectmen, and they came, some of them came to you guys as well.
Yep.
Asking for help, we did studies and figured out what we were gonna do in each neighborhood. The, the first neighborhood, Coachman's and Old Country, that project was completed this summer. And then, really, the second one we were gonna do was Pine Tree and Peck, but because of the ARPA funds, we really rushed to get this done, so we can get under contract before the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
And this is the longstanding flooding issue in the Brookside and Glenbrook. It's basically caused by the, the old Derby-New Haven Railroad, used to run through there, there's an old stone culvert, and it's on private property, and we studied a variety of different alternatives. One of them would be to put much bigger box culverts in, in the current location, uh, running all the way in the backyards through these streets, then a new thing under the ra- what was the railroad embankment, then under Derby-Milford Road, possibly another private driveway, and maybe high ridge. A couple of years ago, we were at three-point-four million, not counting any right-of-way, so you'd probably be four to five million. Uh, the first selectman had an idea, he wanted us to look at an alternative, and it turned out to be a less expensive alternative, I mean, still expensive, but relatively less expensive. And that is taking the, taking the stream at Brookside and running it down Brookside and down Glenbrook, because the town owns the roads, and discharging it to the same river, which ends up going to the Hoozatonic downstream. Uh, the advantage of this route is it get the, the, the pipe, we're using a basically a six-foot diameter pipe, has a much greater slope, so you get much better flow. The disadvantage is Glenbrook Road goes up when your pipe is going down, so it is a, a deep cut. I think it's about twenty feet at the deepest, that adds to the expense.
So what was the other alternative in terms of a cash, money?
Uh, the more expensive alternative was to keep the culverts in the current location.
But what was the money?
Uh, there was three-point-four million, but that was, uh, an older estimate, about two years old.
So now it's like four million.
And then you have to pay the people for easements, because it's private property, right?
Right, and then you had an unwilling property owner, so it would have been possibly takings or paying a lot of money. Whereas these, in, these easements we're getting are typically people who benefit.
So let's just say we go with Kevin's four million, plus some big for some of the things you've just, and throw the contingency on it, you're probably at five. So we're coming in here, it's a little under three.
Right.
So somebody had a good idea to save you two million.
Yeah, it is, it is...
I just wanna make sure.
It's, it's relatively, I, I, I think the dollar amount is still quite a bit, but...
Yeah, okay.
Not, not minimizing it. And the proposal, uh, had been to use the remaining ARPA balance, and I think the wording we're looking for is, uh, Finance Department has this current number, a million ninety-three thousand. But there probably will end up being a little bit more as we're closing out the other projects, so we wanna direct all of it into this project, so it'll all be committed and under contract by the end of the calendar year.
So, John, when we do a proposal, or, or, it, does it, we have a motion, is that what we're gonna get?
Yeah, I would make the motion exactly what six A is.
To use up all of the ARPA money?
Use the wording that I have right in six A, right there. To allocate funds from ARPA account to fund Brookside Drive and Glenbrook Road Culver Project. And then I put in parentheses, one million oh ninety-three, four eighty-one, plus any surpluses from other...
So when we get to the motion thing, that'll be it, okay. I'm sorry, Bob, please continue.
We have to, again, like Bob said, we have to be under contract by December thirty-first. We're rushing to get this done.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, the, the good news is that we had a lot of interest from contractors, because this would be for spring work, so getting now is good.
This is the list you got here?
Yeah, yeah, so obviously, a lot of people were interested, and you can tell we got a good price. Not that much lower than, uh, a bulk of them are in the three-million-dollar range, but a little bit under that. And a few, a few high ones out there. So I think we got the best price we're gonna get.
Yeah, the ones there is ten, ten percent under, and second best.
Burns Construction does a lot of utility work and railroad work around this state. They're well-known.
Well-known, good, good. So what I see here is an expensive thing, since it's gonna come out of all our, our capital, right?
The remainder would be capital.
But on a certain way, it's doing significantly more with less from where we start.
Relatively speaking, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So do we have a motion for, uh, item A?
Sure, I'll make it.
A second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, I'm staying unanimous.
Alright, Bob, you up, up again?
Six B is just the rest of the money for the project.
Right, because we're at the two-five plus.
Right.
Oh.
So you'd, same, make that the same motion.
Okay, your second motion, or, or is it two pieces?
It should be a second motion.
Okay, I'll make that second motion, Kevin, you wanna say it, that way we get the same.
There's a motion by Jim, second by Kevin.
Reliable, if something goes wrong.
For one point seven-six-five million. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, I'm staying unanimous.
Okay, Bob, I think this is the memo you wrote, is that correct?
No, item C.
Yep.
Right, that'll be his second memo, I, right to the board.
This is a proposal from the design engineer, Cardinal Engineering Associates, to do the same scope of work they did for the Coachman's and Old Country. And that is, uh, reviewing shop drawings and submittals, uh, reviewing payment, and just being available for design issues that come up during construction. They're not out there, that price is not for people to be out there every day, it would be significantly higher if they were doing the construction inspection.
So, so this has to do with the exact same...
Project.
Project. So these are your eyes and ears, type of guys?
No, they're, they're not gonna be out there all the time, but they provide, um...
No, but it looks like when you, when I looked, it looked like they're there for the reviews.
Yes, yep, that's, there's a scope.
Right.
That's the same thing we did on Coachman's and Old Country, and it, I was, we went out, it was out there every day, but if things came up, they were helpful.
Curious, have they worked with this, uh, Burns Construction before?
I'm not sure. I don't think so.
You don't get that matters? I don't know, I don't do that.
No, they didn't work with the, they, I don't think they'd worked with Earthworks Excavating, the contractor we had on the other project, but that contractor we're very happy with.
Okay, I just was curious, that's all.
So then...
So what do you need, a motion here, John?
Yeah, that would be C there, you can do that motion.
I'll do it, I'll make the motion.
Good motion by Kevin, by Jim, second by Kevin. Any further discussion, all those in favor? I oppose, I'm staying unanimous.
Trying to make it easy for you. Uh, the, the one thing I will go back to, and Bob talked about, there were three drainage projects. The third one is Pine Tree Drive, and we're gonna be getting a state grant to cover that.
Really?
Yeah.
I walked by that today.
How much was the grant? Um, million something, low two million, it may change when they actually get to bidding. Yeah, right, right.
Wow, we've come out of this like, like well.
We did three bad areas.
Yeah, it's helpful.
And this, this'll all start in January or February?
Sometime next spring.
Spring, yeah. I mean, the, the contractors are gonna start with the shop drawing and ordering and things, but the...
Because I'm just looking at our agenda?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, we got, we got time, we got time now.
He's not on here to move more.
Bob and I have had that discussion already.
Is that gonna impact the school, Peck Place?
That project will, yeah, we're gonna try to do that in the summer.
Okay, yeah, it's right in the corner there, right?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. We won't give you the quiz on the, uh...
Okay, so now, item six becomes the AMITI update.
Alright.
Mr. Nozo.
Hey, everyone.
Hey, Joe.
Alright, so, um, I was not able to make the AMITI meeting last Monday, but I do have all of our information, as does Jim. So, uh, quick, it was, not much on the agenda, but we talked a little bit about our pension, uh, performance. So, I don't know, Jim, you have, you don't, you don't have to follow, right? You wanna follow, you don't have to, I mean, I have, I have it here, but you don't have it up there. But anyway, so the AMITI pension, as of, uh...
No, no, put it up, it'll take a second, just fire it right in.
You wanna go over here?
Yeah, give it a look. Maybe we'll have calling on Chris in a second, but I don't think so. Let's see if we can, some of these old guys can handle all this AV stuff, huh? And, um, let's see, yeah, you go, hey, Joey, I like it.
We're in business.
Very good.
We're in business. Alright, so the AMITI pension, uh, quarter end September thirty, had eighteen point seven million dollars in it. The performance on the charts, as you can see there, one year was twenty-four point three, uh, for the portfolio, and then the benchmark was twenty-four point one, so, uh, good there. And then three and five-year results were five point eight and nine point four on the portfolio.
Yep.
So overall, very good, as we've all seen in our 401Ks, uh, last couple of years, things have been pretty good. So jumping down to, uh, OPEB, OPEB's balance was just under four million dollars over here. Uh, and the results here, as you can see, uh, you know, twenty, twenty-two, uh, five for the three-year average, and then, uh, almost nine for the five-year, so overall, pretty good there. And then, uh, the last small one is Secundseverance, that's at a balance of, of four sixty, and you see the performance number is very similar to what we've already seen. And then, we'll jump over to the enrollment. So the enrollment numbers, uh, you know, most of us have already seen these here. Student population is going up by thirty-seven, uh, for this year. Uh, our, our portion is a thousand forty-three students. And as you see, Woodbridge and Bethany over there as well, total of twenty-one fifty-three, um, as of last month. Uh, an increase of thirty-seven. And then the enrollment shift here, numbers, as we can see for us, seven oh three. Woodbridge, eight oh six, eight oh seven, uh, and Bethany's, we're just one oh four, uh, on the negative side.
That's good news for us.
Good news for us, yeah.
Would you hold it right there, Joe? I, I created a couple of shards, which don't amplify much on this. And I'll look to maybe John, Kevin, everybody, though. I had a, is that a change of member town allocations with a zero, aren't we talking about twenty-five, twenty-six?
This will be twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, but what they're saying is, if their budget is flat for twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll pay seven hundred thousand dollars less.
Right, right. Right, right. Well, why is it saying twenty-four, twenty-five is my question?
Yeah, the title's off.
I was gonna mention it to Terry, that's all, because I was gonna ask for the Excel file, but, okay. I mean, I was just wondering whether I was off.
But the ADM is, as of October, but for the whole year, twenty-four, twenty-five.
It kicks in for the year, yep.
Well, it, but it, it sets the.
It impacts next year.
And, all right, as long as I'm thinking right, that's all I need to know. All right.
I'm sure, because they just reappropriate the same template.
Okay.
Thing, thing that's even more interesting is the second sheet with the, with the projected kids coming in and out.
Oh, yeah, this is where the action is. This is where I used to do the projections, six years out. They bring in, you know, people from out of town. We get the data right here. I mean, it's the best data we have. People leave, people come in, people come, private schools, you know, all that. Private schools come in, you know, all that changed, but there's the data, yeah.
And then thirty, the financials. So as, John, you asked about the twenty-three, twenty-four, actual surplus was a million fifty. So half of that is ours as a credit. Uh, transfer account has a million ninety-one in there, which we know are two percent. So two million dollars plus surplus.
So surplus, Joe, uh, Joe, is the total of the transfer account. And the other one, let's just keep it fair on the verbal, okay? We will get half of the, of the other thing, but.
So we're gonna, we're gonna do it the same way in March?
Keep it fair, right, Joe, keep it fair.
Keep it fair.
March, our March payment will be lower than that.
Yeah, it'll be lower than that, yeah. Something like that. Okay.
And then we'll go down to thirty-seven over here. And then thirty-seven, page thirty-seven, we always talk about.
Very strong, Joe. I'm very impressed. I gotta need, I gotta learn some of this. Very good. Is this the claims so far?
Claims. So actual last year.
So a little bit over so far?
Yeah, actual last year were almost a hundred, and this year were a hundred point seven.
Yeah, there are barriers by months. We'll see.
These are the projections here, as you can see.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe not much of a surplus coming from this account anymore. We'll see.
Oh, Joe, it's early yet. Come on, they came in, they were five hundred thousand over, and then they came in like three hundred thousand under. Let's just look like, show us, let's go to one of that. Oh, show me this, Joe. This is great. I'm in, man. I've waited on this.
And then these are the transfers, over three thousand dollars.
Did some work.
A little bit of activity.
What we got, Joe?
Yeah, two variable frequency drives. So I may have to ask for some IT guidance here. What are frequency drives, Kev?
You're asking the wrong guy.
So some type of, some type of IT work.
I think Tom's not here. We may have, be at nine o'clock. Um, he may know the answer.
Almost, you know, just under ten thousand, over nine thousand for that transfer.
Okay.
A special ed. Paraeducators, I guess, are having trouble filling some spots there. A lot of turnover. Was in motion for.
It's national.
Yeah, twenty-six thousand dollars.
Particularly with pairs.
Is it really? Why is that, you know?
Um, because pairs generally don't, don't get paid very well. Um, and it's a hard job.
Yeah.
And it's, and usually you need more than you can afford in terms of, you know.
So what's really happening, Anna, when you transfer money from classified salaries to professional technicals? Is that the one you're talking about?
The pair, that's the pair number, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I assume, I think professional technical services.
Yeah.
Um, that's just to cover the.
They, they have more demand for that kind of resource at this point?
I think if you go up a little bit, they say that they're using a service, right?
Yes.
To cover.
Delta T.
Delta T is a, is a service, so it's like a subservice. And so that's gonna be more expensive than what they would just, if they could just hire paraeducators.
Okay.
So if you pay paraeducators twenty dollars an hour, the delta T might be thirty-two dollars an hour, because you have to pay them.
Wish the people get twenty-five or something like that?
Or maybe even eighteen. It's a business.
Got you there.
Yeah, I have no idea how much it is, but.
Got the, got the concept.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that fifty-three thousand won't cover as many as if they could just hire two pairs for that, right? That might only.
Actually, that's twenty-five for the pairs up above.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And that fifty-three, so take a look at the next one.
Oh, for physical therapy.
Yeah, so occupational physical therapy services, that's a big number. Um, what, what, what does that mean to us, Anna?
That's gonna be for, um, students who, uh, under their, through their IEP are required to get occupational physical therapy services during the school day.
Who get hurt.
No, 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 that's gonna be as part of their, as part of.
Special ed, right?
Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry. Got it, okay, okay.
So it's just, yeah, it's part of their, of the needs of the student, and so, you know, public education.
Oh, this is for the students?
Yeah, yeah. This is occupational physical therapy with the first three for students.
Got it, got it.
And again, it would be through, they, they have the capacity to go out and actually just contract directly with an OT or a PT, but if they can't, then they'll have to go through a service, much like that delta T service. There's a, you know, there are a lot of different services that will provide OT and PT, but they're more expensive.
At the middle school and homebound settings?
Yep.
Okay. That's, that's a big number, fifty thousand dollars there. And that was it for the transfers over three thousand dollars.
So that material is in our Word document that we send out every month to this team that we get.
Yeah, the PDF documents, yeah, PDF packet up there.
So, Anna, a quick question. Would, would the OT and PT, um, salaries, those FTEs that are in that budget, would they typically be full-time employees, or would they be?
Probably not full-time. They're, yeah, they're part-time, um, for whatever the needs are based on that year.
Well, I can, hold on, I'll check it out, I'll check it out.
They wouldn't necessarily, depending on the FTE, they wouldn't necessarily need benefits. And I mean, if that was, I don't know if that was the total that was budgeted for, that would be our time, for sure. And the other thing, I know at last meeting, we, um, you know, we, you talked about fourteen percent, uh, of the student population who have, who are on IEP. Um, that is, that's all special education. If you add in five oh four, which is also part of the IDEA, it's about twenty-nine percent of the student population. The state, um, average for special legislation, or the state education, uh, population is seventeen percent.
Thank you for that, Charlie.
Yep.
Thank you. That's good. Mr. Jim, we're good. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Joe, I wanna give you an A, if not an A-plus.
Ooh, look at that.
For wording out that way.
It's good.
I am very impressed, and I wish that you will continue that, that.
Item seven is, uh, Mr. Leahy.
Yeah. I don't have much more than what Joe had, so we'll just get through with this fast.
Perfect.
Um, so there's a slide. These are the things, and all I did was just highlight where they are, but I went in back, grabbed the one from last year, Joe. So when you look on the left-hand side, it's last year's version of the same thing that Joe just presented, which was in the document that John just sent out. So, um, again, these, for everybody in town, if you don't know, the enrollment, our enrollment as part of the overall AMITI, the three towns, that will drive our allocations in future years for how much we have to pay regarding the whole AMITI budget, whatever it turns out to be. And what you saw last October, in the left-hand side of the screen, is that we went, and it's, again, it's a percentage of the total. So you could actually have fewer students, not in this year, it didn't happen, but you could actually, there have been years where you had fewer students, but your percentage went up. So it's always a percentage game. In that particular year, you can see we went up, uh, by thirty-five in the middle there under orange, and that the, uh, Bethany went down eighteen, and that Woodbridge went up ten. And so you could see that our percentage went from the prior year of forty-eight point, uh, eight-nine-four to forty-nine point seven-one-six. So it went up point eight-two-two percent. Remember, one percent of a fifty-million-dollar budget is five hundred thousand, right? So that's just the percent, uh, of what you have to cover. Um, we've already discussed whether or not the, the wording is maybe a little bit different, but the numbers are the same. And here's the right-hand side this year. And again, you can see we went down only nine, uh, but in this particular year, Bethany went up two. But look on the right, you can see Woodbridge went up forty-four, all right, uh, which, which will get to John's point in the next slide in just a second. So you can see for us, we are going from that forty-nine, seven-one-six that we saw over in the left there in the red, and now we are at forty-eight, four-four-four percent. Thus, we are down one point two-two, uh, two-seven-two percent, which roughly is gonna be about seven hundred and three thousand dollars, assuming no increase in budget, which we, we may or may not have, but anyway. So that's a good news thing, and I think I heard Kevin's voice saying that, all right? Um, uh, but that's gonna be for next budget season, which we will be going through the process now, starting in July one of next year, which is two thousand twenty-five. All right, everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The one that John mentioned, though, and I agree a hundred percent, this is the most interesting slide. Um, and what you see here in the ADM column, I've noted it with the little arrow up top, because it isn't the entire students that AMITI deals with in one capacity or another, but it is the one that you can see is grade seven through twelve, plus a mix of other things going on, and then they add up to twenty-one fifty-three. This is an Excel chart, uh, chart that Terry Loomis puts out. Um, and what I wanted to mention, uh, a, a couple of things, and I, do not be worried, by the way. You see that number twenty-one fifty-three under the ADM, and for whatever reason, on the right-hand side, let me just do this so I can see what's going on. Um, on the right-hand side at the bottom in the gray, you can see that it says the total in, in the elementary was twenty-five forty-six. I wouldn't want anybody to get the mistaken notion that that would be meaning that in a few years hence or so, uh, that would be the number at AMITI. Because as you can see, it covers not just grades one through six, but also includes K and pre-K, which is three hundred and seventy-five students. So it, whatever it is, I just wanted to let you know that it's about the numbers that we have now, seven through twelve is what we have in one through six. But here's some interesting stuff, and I'll just show you by, and you can roll your own when you want. But the idea is this, tw- grade twelve next year, when we see this slide, will be leaving, right? Leaving. Grade six will be moving in. Now, there could be people leaving the district. I don't want my kid going from grade six to grade seven, grade eight to grade, now whatever it is. Or that's when I want them to go back to the school, whatever happens, all right? But the best idea you have right now is what you see here. And what I do right now is I see to myself, hey, one hundred and seventy-four of Orange is leaving, and one hundred and sixty-six is coming in. That's what I see. What I see even more interesting is the issue with Woodbridge, one twelve leaving, one twenty-six coming in. All right, and the difference up here is even fifty-eight and sixty-two. It doesn't mean that they will go in one for one, but it gives you an idea for a trend. So I'm just saying, when you see this chart, if that helps you kinda quickly get a stab, how to look at it, snap, snap. And you can even do, you know, sink for how many years out by doing the same analysis.
Two years will be scary when we go to one ninety-three.
Mm-hmm.
Well, this is, and that's why you have to not just look at what's happening for our budget, there's some coming here, Kev, right? Because we're talking about spending our money, just like we do at home, reasonably, and that's what we do in terms of assessing budgets. But anyway, I just wanted to leave that, and I think that's all I have, Kevin. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just also, can I, you just go back to that really quick?
Sure, absolutely.
I just also wanna point out those middle two columns, outside and BOAG, so outside placements and BOAG.
Let me get it up. Yep, please.
Um, just that, you know, those are also, even though those students aren't in our actually, actual schools, we're still responsible for paying for them.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, you know, you can kinda see, and it's a, obviously, it's, um, vertical instead of horizontal with the grades. But, um, particularly with the outside placements, and I have no idea what the situation is with these, uh, students, but, um, over the last couple of years, the state of Connecticut has changed the date for students who do, based on their needs. Um, school districts are, are required to continue their education through the age of twenty, now it's to the, the year they, they turn twenty-three. It was when they turned twenty-one, then it was the year they turned twenty-two, now it's all the way through the year of their twenty-two. So if they're, if they had turned twenty-two in September, we are still on the hook all the way through September through June.
For special ed.
First, to whatever transition program or outside placement they might be in, so, um.
Because back when it was twenty-one.
They turned twenty-one and they were done.
They were, you were out, you'd be, October twelfth, you were out of the school.
Done. You were, you transitioned to whatever post-program. Um, so it's, it, you know, that, those are, those twenty-two students may or may not, you know, um, again, depending on.
There could be repeats in what we call grade twelve.
Exactly. Grade twelve could go on for another bunch of years.
It could be.
But it may not, also, you never know.
It could be an inventory growing in grade twelve.
And more than they come back, you know, who knows?
Okay.
Yeah, look at open choice for Woodbridge's twenty-three children. What does that mean?
Open choi-, uh, so, uh, Woodbridge, a couple of years ago, um, opened more seats to open choice. So open choice are, are students in, um, the New Haven Public Schools, who they enter into a program into kind of a, you know, a choice program, that they, um, are able to come to one of our three schools, and Orange and Bethany have, you know, have a, had a cap. I think all three towns for, pretty much consistently were sent the same cap. And maybe in twenty-twenty-one, might have been twenty-twenty, um, Woodbridge increased their cap. So it just means that they have twenty-three students in, um, in the Woodbridge, that came through the Woodbridge system, that are, then go into the AMITI.
Don't live in town.
Right, they live in New Haven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, open choice with, for us is New Haven. There are open choice programs all over the state.
And no tuition for that, no tuition.
But we get money for open choice, yeah. I don't know how much it is, but.
That might be, I don't know if you were on the board, I did a, I, I read an article and then did some research on how, if a student goes to another school district, and I don't know if it would be that situation on open choice for this category, but there is state funding when that type of system.
Yeah, well, similar to, um, the VOAG and Magnet and Charter. So we have to pay a portion of when students go to those programs, that's how, you know, they, so it's kind of a, kind of similar, right?
But I agree with your point, John, this is where there's a lot of thought you could put on it.
And then you also see we have seven students who are paying tuition to go to Woodbridge schools.
Mm-hmm. Do you think that what they did is put all seven who were going to the high school in the Woodbridge category there?
I don't know, maybe. Yeah, it could be. I don't know if that's.
Because they have to be from out of town, right?
Yeah, they're, they're just, they're not.
They probably put it as a placeholder in the Woodbridge bucket as an AMITI kind of thing. All right.
Yeah, maybe they just came in the secondary.
Okay, Kev, good?
Thank you, Jim.
All right, good, thank you.
Item number eight, we're back on the right numbers here. Discussion and approval of minutes from October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Actually, it was a special meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a special meeting, but you're at the wrong spot, yeah. Special place.
Yeah. Okay, what, what are we doing? Oh, the minutes. John, you're batting leadoff, I hate to mention it, but you did come in second in the World Series.
Yeah, had to mention that. Second's better than where the Red Sox came.
Got you there, oh, gosh, come on.
Right back at you.
Any check?
I was trying to be nice to you, John. I've been giving you kudos for the Yankees for a while.
Okay, bottom of the first page, where it says Chairman Holyham inquired to Dr. Mann of AMITI Athletics, who made the Connecticut, I think it said, who, it should be who win the Connecticut state championship.
Right.
Or won.
Won. Yeah, then just as you keep going to the next page, instead of supplies, you think I had rings.
Championship rings.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of commissioners in here, Deb.
Rings.
Hey, Deb, there's a whole bunch of commissioners in here.
Commissioner. Oh, yeah.
In other words, on that same line, on the top of page two, I think I'm seeing Commissioner Leahy, and then the next sentence or two sentences, many commissioner members, uh, were not a commission.
Oh, yeah, board, okay.
Board, okay. So at the bottom, there's the, the, the commission members in the last line.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, then if we go to number six.
Number six, thank you.
My bullet point, explain that the Board of Selectmen should be approved the total cost of five forty-four, three fifty-nine, which included rubberized matting for the flooring at Fred Wolf Park. I don't know, flooring's right, that should be ground, maybe?
Yeah.
Why don't you leave it at just rubberized matting?
At Fred Wolf Park.
Yeah, at Fred Wolf Park, that may, that may cover it, right?
Yeah.
All right, all good. All right, so we're in that zone there.
Number nine.
Whoops.
Uh, discuss proposed, oh, what am I doing here? No, above number nine, I guess it is, where it says, Mr. Saffrari mentioned that AMITI requested an additional week to prepare their budget, and will present their proposed budget, not final.
Oh, yeah.
Proposed budget. And that's all I had. John?
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
I don't remember, I read it over, Kevin, I don't have anything, I'm slipping. I thought it was very good job, besides the commissioner, I think.
Yep.
Commissioner, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstain, unanimous. Thank you. All right, the ugly part of the meeting. Item number nine, this is why AMD helps us a lot this year. Information on revaluation phase-in, Mr. Sifarelli.
Okay, I was informed just last week or the week before that our phase-in is going to be held to three years, so it means next two years, we're going to phase in at thirty-seven and a half percent, instead of the, I think we had planned, hoped for twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah.
So, and we're, we're, the next reevaluation's going to happen quicker, so Mr. Brancisi's going to have to ask for money in his budget, probably not this budget, but the next budget to do it. And in the state's wisdom, they've put us all in a district, so the district that we're in is all doing it at the same time, and there's only like three companies that do reevaluations, and it means the price is probably going to skyrocket for, and it's a full...
Let's create a company.
You're right. And it's, it's a full reevaluation where they're going to be asking to enter your houses, to look, uh, to do the walkthrough in your houses also.
Good luck.
They do that every ten years.
I don't know, is Meriden in the same group as us?
We are.
You are. So we're going to be, uh, out to bid against each other, huh?
No, we're not getting the full revow, though. We, uh, we did ours back in twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
Every ten years, they do a full comprehensive revow, which means they do onsite inspection.
I don't remember, I've been here forty years, I don't remember anyone coming into my home.
Yeah, you're not obligated.
They tried.
They did, they came through my neighborhood years ago, and like, nobody was home, nobody let anybody in.
Yeah.
We had, you can't trust anyone, like, come on to your house.
No, it's not true. By the way, I've done a lot of projects in my life, right? Forty-five years, maybe more, and management can smell something, you can almost smell stuff that just doesn't add up. Nothing about this, we have to do these in the same, uh, yeah, there's something else going on here. I mean, you know, but getting back to your thing, so we made this presentation, John and, uh, team, I, we made it, I created a few slides anyway, hopefully it helped. But this is no longer operable, this is from the town budget hearing from last spring, where we were saying, we were hoping to get, uh, um, rather than, and the key here was, the budget increase was increasing by one seventy-six on average, the yellow, and the four eighty-eight is what we were going to be spreading out on the revow, right? So, since we only took twenty-five percent of the revow in year one, the year we are currently in that we were talking about going into with that slide in the town budget hearing in April, we now have to cover three quarters, right? We did a quarter, but since we're told we have to do, uh, uh, the, the rest of it in two years, we have to cover the seventy-five percent, which per the example we hear, means that we have to cover the one twenty-two, right? In three, they have to have a three pieces, three sixty-six, in two years, one eighty-three, if I'm going right, right? So that's just the one example of that particular property, right? So one I happen to know best, but anyway. Uh, but that's the concept, if I heard you right, John. Okay. So we can see there's now a built-in, whatever it was we had for an increase, we don't, you know, we had two pieces of our increase last year, all right? So what, we now have a, more of a built-in, which means even more, if we want to keep our taxes reasonably, so that's not going up by a high percent, it's a different issue, but that means all the more to keep the yellow as modest as we can, as far as the budget increase increase. So it'll be that kind of thing we'll be projecting in the spring. And we'll, we'll, we'll use this as, what we told you last time, here's what's happened, and here's what the result is.
Yeah, so we have two things we could calculate before our, all day is, all right, what's this do if we have a flat budget? And we have the seven oh three from AMD savings, so hopefully that kind of offsets each other, and we can go from there. But I haven't had time to run the numbers yet, so we'll figure that out.
When did we find that out, John?
We won't have our green list until sometime in February.
No, when did we find out that it was going to be the three years? You said it was recent information?
Oh, I just found out two weeks ago.
I don't even think it was that long ago.
Probably not. Whenever I told you I found out...
I think it was like a week ago, yeah.
Probably a week ago.
Lots going on, but I think it was recent.
By the way, what's, without getting into, you know, five minutes worth or, or, or whatever, what's the quick and dirty of why we have to follow it?
Because it's state law.
Okay, so if we don't follow state law, we, we speed down the road, I mean, whatever.
You'll lose all your grants and money.
Which for us would be what, a million, two?
No, it'd be more than that, it'd be ECS money.
ECS is a million, too.
It'd be the grants for the bridges, be everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of one, kind of two.
I was just wondering, you know?
Perkins.
Fine, anyway, thank you, Kevin, for the interjection. I thought it would be helpful.
All right.
All right.
Item number ten, review revenue and expense reports for November twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, I'll have to get these up for you, Johnny. Are you gonna go with, um, the, the one I already had, or, um, I don't think I opened any of the others yet, John, so just give me a second. Eleven eighteen, revenue, okay, that's the typical one. And then we had revenue projection, that's this one, so we can bump that up a bit. That's an interesting one, by the way, if you, I was looking at it earlier, um, while Tom was talking. Um, and then this one, this is the expenses. So we usually start with revenue. Which of the two revenues do you want to focus on, John?
Whatever one you, you would like.
Well, Kevin, do you have a preference? You're the chairman.
I do not.
I would propose that we look at this one, since it's a new one. And, um, what I would mention is what, the way my brain was able to get my arms around it, it had a year-to-date on the left, which had the same date, but that's right now, this year, or last month, end of last month, and a year-to-date over here, uh, pretty close to the same thing last year. So you've got kind of apples to apples, right? And, you know, you can do one, you can do a bunch of different things on any individual line item, but what you might want to do is immediately go to the back, and you'll notice a couple of things. First of all, you might notice that we were at fifty-six point seven percent of our goal, and we were fifty-four point one, so you might say, whoa, two point six percent, that'd be about, uh, two, what did I add it up to? Maybe two point eight million or something like that. That doesn't seem good, but the number was about the same. If you notice that the forty-five-five and the forty-five-three were pretty close, all right? So there was that, I noticed.
I think, Jenny...
Yes, sir.
I think this report is, is more current.
Yeah.
Well, it's more current, but this gives you a, a, a look at a comparison.
Year to year?
From last year to this year. Oh, absolutely, just when the other one's more current. I mean, I don't even know, we should spend any more time than that on it. Uh, there was a couple of things.
The one thing I would, I would say about Art's report, if you go to the last page again.
Yes.
And he's a little more liberal than I am, but he's projecting a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar surplus on the revenue side.
Yep.
And we've heard tonight, we're going to get back five hundred thousand from AMD, so you could throw that in there, too. So Roma said a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus, that's what I'd look at. But I have looked at all his line items, sometimes he will put money in that he thinks we're getting, that I don't think we are, so.
Well, one, one...
We're only five months into it.
Maybe we'll just cut it in half, we're at...
John, I will ask only one question, and I want to definitely get to the other one, and particularly since Chad has, has got some work there. If you go to page two, and you look in the second group called treasurer, and if you look to the one that is like four from the bottom, I feel like it's like Million Dollar Movie here, right? Fourth from the bottom, and you see that revenue share, right? Now, how was it we had five hundred and eighty-two last year, as of this date, in that line item? That's what I was asking myself.
I think what happened last year is they, they got combined into one, and I, I believe last month, I told you, I didn't think we were getting the revenue sharing, because we got a, an email from the state saying we weren't going to get it, but then we turn around, I think two weeks after our meeting, we got it. So we don't know now if the memo we got means in the new budget year, or what they're doing, so...
Well, you have to give it back.
Could very well be.
Seventy-five percent of it over the last next two years. Okay, uh, um, Chad, you want to go to the first one, then? You seem to be hot to trot on it, and why don't you...
More current.
No, no, all good. Yeah, it's, it's for sure more current. Let's let me get my, uh, cause I did take a peek at it. Joe, I was taking my fair. Yeah, we should be thirty-six percent at four and a half months into twelve, it seemed to me, nine out of twenty-four. Um, and all the big numbers seem to be big. Um, and here, we got to the end, and we saw we're at fifty-four percent, uh, on our revenue, but that makes sense, since we, we got all our taxes in, right? So, I mean, that makes sense. John, you got anything you want to comment on in general about the revenue?
The only thing I always really look at, I look at it all, but the one I'm always most concerned about is the tax revenue.
Right here on page two.
And I don't, I don't think we have a problem there at all.
Okay.
I mean, you, you look at his motor vehicle collection, it's five twenty-five. I think out of that, I think Amazon owes about two hundred thou in motor vehicles that he's chasing, so we're not, we're nowhere near that.
Mm-hmm.
We'll get our supplemental motor vehicle number the middle of next month, maybe I'll have it for our next meeting. Last year it was eight hundred thou, so I'd expect that six to actually be a little higher also. I don't, I don't know, there's got to be a misposting there that we're already collected two hundred and fifty-three dollars on supplemental motor vehicles, cause those bills haven't...
Probably from last year or somewhere, yeah.
No, those bills haven't gone out, so it should have been in prior year, probably, or something like that.
Supplemental motor vehicle.
Those are people that buy the cars in the fall between, I want to say September, July first, something like that. It's, it's a certain period of months that we pick it up. Like, I bought, like, I bought my car in October, my new one, I'll get a supplemental bill for that. It'll give me a, it'll give me a credit, partial credit on the old car, because I use the same plates. That's the other thing that he talks about. If you use the same plates, it works out well. If you pick up new plates, or don't turn in the old plates, you have a problem.
Oh.
Right.
So, when someone doesn't pay a bill, over time, and let's just say there's a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, whatever it is, you'd, that, and I don't pay it. I don't pay it, I don't pay it, it's eighteen percent and a half a month.
Eighteen percent interest.
What is the probability that eventually I pay it?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
Including the interest.
Yeah. In other words...
Other than cars on, on...
No, no, cars.
On cars, it depends who the people are. Some miss, some move out of town.
In the bucket of all those things, what's the prob, what's the chance it gets paid?
Probably seventy percent.
And it has the, the money and the interest piled up.
Cause your, your registration will get pulled.
Right.
Eventually.
That's, that's what usually happens, it comes time for the registration.
So when we're talking about that issue earlier, and I didn't want to bring this up earlier, right?
It's, it's more of the people that move out of state.
We're only talking about the thirty percent, right?
Right, it's more the people that move out of state.
People that move are the people that die.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Cause the others, you're gonna...
Yeah, cause if you have to register a new vehicle or buy a new vehicle...
And you didn't pay it.
Pay it.
And that, that's the item he spoke about, too. I think he charged us some twenty dollars now to get same-day clearance.
Correct.
So they can register their motor vehicles.
Oh, yeah, if you want to register, and you can do it right there, twenty bucks, I imagine would be godsend. All right, team, are there open for a bid here for questions on the revenue side?
It's early here.
Yeah, good, it is.
Is she, Chad, Joe, Anna?
Good.
Good for the month now? We did a pretty thorough review of it.
There's one, there's one thing I'll call your attention to, which is unusual. On the first page of their plan in zoning, there's zoning violations, and we collected twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollars this year in zoning violations. We had two properties that were under blight, and were getting fined daily, and, uh, they were able to collect on that.
Wow.
Did the property, John, get okay?
I believe they do.
Did we collect that through a constable?
No, we collect that, I think through our zoning enforcement office or our town attorney.
And if they just, if they don't ever fix the property, do they just continue to get fined?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, since they just paid twenty-seven, I imagine they would not...
Hey, uh, better part of value, yeah. Maybe not what was hundred percent, but some negotiation on there.
John, last call? Kev?
Good.
Good. Expenses are next. Get rid of these two, so we can just focus on the expenses, and here we are. Again, I'll just roll to the back page, so we can see what the total number is together. Looks like it's, uh, on about, uh, forty-five percent. Thirty-six percent would be on a level load, but we know we pay a lot of things in bulk. I went to my two, I made the question last time, on the two, you know, debt service, for example, we're already up to seventy-five percent of the total, as you can see right at the screen there, right? And then, like I did last time, we've already paid half of our AMD, uh, commitment for the year, uh, so, you know, that's a different question as to why and all that stuff. But what we can see is there are reasons for why it's way higher than thirty-six, which would be a level load. Okay, well, we'll throw it open for bid for the team. John, you want to start?
Uh, if you have any questions, I don't, I don't really have any concerns.
Okay, no concerns from John? Kev, anything pop out at you? Team will, uh, little bit to look at it, we have a few seconds, I think.
We did a pretty thorough last meeting, too.
Yeah, we did, we did, invested a bunch, but... Now, we'll have this when we get together, when we're looking at the budgets, but it will still only be through six, six and a half months of the year at that point, probably, right? Probably seven, at January thirty-first, maybe.
January, yeah, we'll probably have seven.
Late January, at least.
But not all the bills may be in for January at that time.
But at least a little more guidance. I'll leave it up, anybody wants to shout out? Kev?
I'm good. Everyone all set?
All set.
Good, everybody good? Thank you.
One last thing, Mr. Chairman. I forgot to mention, the AMD initial budget presentation is next Monday.
Six thirty.
Twenty-fifth, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, Dr. Byers, I did get an email from her.
Yeah, she sent it to all of us.
Yeah, okay. I think it went to my Gmail account, which I don't honestly always check as often as I should.
Lastly, Kev, I'd like to wish you happy birthday this coming Thursday, Mr. Chairman.
Happy birthday, maybe we'll see you at the AMD game.
Yes.
All right.
On that note, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, all right.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Second, Joe seconded it. Joe seconded it, perfect.
Joe, Joe, right.
Meeting adjourned at, uh, eight thirty-five.
Great.